I do have a vision of the arts here in Bennington having the opportunity to also run a store at our museum. I work with many artists. One of the things that I feel is that many of our artists don't have a common space, and we've had many iterations of a brick and mortar store downtown, but they're so dependent upon the people involved. They come, they go, and they do well while they're there, but they also, it's dependent upon the people, so a lot of times they fail. So I've been doing some research independently, and here's a public forum to say, hey, I could use some help. So if anybody has a common vision to be able to sustain the arts through a brick and mortar store in our downtown area, preferably in the walking district as it helps commerce, et cetera, and then I can send more people downtown in addition to Fiddlehead and other artist spots downtown. So because it's dependent upon the people, one of the visions that I've had is how to get an organization founded, or a nonprofit, or some kind of other resource that can be more sustaining, because once it's independent, then you can move people within it. So just a little thought that I have brewing. I have many artists that I've chatted with over the years that truly support this, because we do some amazing events downtown that many artists and many crafters can always kind of hawk their wares in a good way. But that's a lot of work. They have to schlep their items, they have to pay the fees and so on, and it's a one-off. So then they go pack up their stuff and bring it back home. Meanwhile, their stuff just sits there. And given that, I feel that, I can't remember the number, we've been consistently ranked in the top four of our country in, thank you for, I'm on the right tab. So we are consistently ranked number four in our country in our demographic of a town, which is in our class of like under 50,000 population. And so given that, it's, by the Bennington Museum, we welcome about 20,000 visitors a year, and of that, about 90% of them are from out of the state. And they're coming here to see art, history, and everything like that. So this is why I believe that we could have a sustainable, functional, kind of independent organization perhaps set up. I would love to chat about that.
Jason, can you clarify, are you looking for a maker space, or are you thinking more of a display area?
Sell.
To sell?
Merchandise.
A storefront?
Yeah, no, brick and mortar, because one of the things that, oh gosh, growing up, we had a really great downtown where I really enjoyed saving up. When I worked at Paul's Fisher, I had to go shop downtown and buy gifts for my parents and, you know, family and so on, at Parnash and other various, Katie Cleaver got her on. So, but those brick and mortars have changed many times over the years, and I feel like we don't really have that strong of a merchandise kind of retail environment that if I'm a visitor in town, that I want to go door to door to door, I might kind of like scan it, but I don't exactly go to door to door. And I feel like focusing on arts and other aspects downtown could help enrich that. Second point that I figured since everybody's jumping up tonight, I'll bring out publicly that I've been talking to a few of you on the select board, also some in the town. Given that I've been on Main Street working and interacting with visitors year over year, we've had a thing called Long Trail Wireless, which I've learned was a grant-funded downtown wireless. I really, really enjoyed that. Now granted, I've been at the museum going over 12 years, so I didn't realize how long ago this was. Apparently it's been dead for well over five, six, seven maybe years. However, given that we have such amazing downtown events, so many merchants come in to set up their tables and so on, they don't have access unless they're dreaming of having a cellphone, and I've talked to a few others downtown, that their cellphones don't even work. Having talked to a couple of computer folks and others, it seems like we can also boost cell signal downtown if we were to have a town-wide Wi-Fi system. Who knew? So I've been kind of tiptoeing into that, having conversations, and these are some visions that I have for helping our downtown. Just some thoughts. Thank you.
Yeah, I would strongly encourage you-
Off the cuff, sorry.
I would strongly encourage you to connect with the BBC, because I'm, I do believe that most of the Mayfest folks have hotspots and take credit cards with no trouble downtown. So, yeah, I mean, the fact that you can have a personal hotspot may have made the long trail-
Perhaps, yeah. It's just one of those cohesive kind of marketing efforts and so on, yeah.
Yeah, but I think certainly the discussion about arts downtown is something that the BBC continues to have, so I would, yeah.
That's my next on the agenda next week.
Great.
Possibly hitting up the BBC.
Good.
Have a good night.
Am I wrong that Housick Falls-
Can you come up?
Yeah.
Am I wrong that, I believe I read something that Housick Falls might be getting a tower, and it's going to help Bennington too?
I don't know. I don't know. It's pretty far away.
No, towers would-
I think it was going to improve the North Side Drive and North Bennington area, as if I remember what-
Oh, where the colleges, okay.
If we're thinking the same thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're learning a lot. We want to learn more. Deb!
I was wondering how the skate park was going, what the prospects of a opening date is or whatever.
Good question. Dan is coming up.
We knew we'd need you for something.
So I always love talking about the skate parks, one of my favorite projects, because of all the wonderful people that are supporting it.
Dan, will you introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry. I'm Dan Monk, Assistant Town Manager for Bennington, standing in for Stuart this evening, who was unavailable. So speaking with our contractors, they're going to come back and begin work as soon as they can in the spring when the weather breaks, and I would expect us to be open in the June timeframe. The contractors have to finish up their work, and then we have to go in and clean it up, landscape, seed and mulch, that sort of thing. So I know that, it's too bad Shannon's not here, she's been working really closely with the skate park folks, focusing on that spring opening, and in trying to make sure that there's lots of public programming. They've been working with the YMCA, and with the high school, and with other organizations, Bike Hub, to make sure that this is a well-used community asset. So I'm thinking June timeframe, don't hold me to that. If it's cold till May, we may not, that may not happen. Who knows today? We don't know. Spring seems like an awful long ways away, but hopefully they'll be in there in March.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks for asking that, Deb.
That was a good question.
All right, what else? Yay, come on up.
Hadn't thought of bringing this one up.
Jim, introduce yourself.
My name is Jim Sullivan. I live in North Bennington. Yeah, hadn't thought about bringing this one up, but since you're looking, digging for comments. I have a longstanding interest in local transportation issues as well as outdoor recreation activities. And there's a significant state-owned resource in town that is essentially the corridor that was to be the southern leg of the Route 279 that's never going to be built. And it's potentially a very valuable resource for the town of Bennington, but until the town takes ownership of it, which I understand is the plan that the state is interested in abandoning that land that they own, the town can't really have the discussion about how it should be best used to the benefit of the community. So I just, I want to put that one out there, because I'm very interested in the potential for that land, and also, you know, if there's any progress been made on that, I'd be interested to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, come on up.
Dan Monk, Assistant Town Manager. I don't have a lot to add. I think Jim's probably as up to speed as I am. I do know in conversations years ago with the state that they did express their intention to town staff, obviously subject to acceptance by the select board, that the state wanted to transfer that property to the town of Bennington. It's just like anything, it's not a high priority probably for them, because there's lots of other things that need to happen as opposed to this, but I do think that perhaps a conversation with Representative Corcoran could get us some information about what the status of that is, and I'd be happy to follow up with Tim Corcoran.
Thank you. Is that, where is that leg? So what is it? It's where 279, the third leg that didn't get built.
It's where they, actually was a place where they placed Phil from the other sections, which is why they acquired it early, they being the state. And so it's actually, it's been constructed to a point where you could essentially put a major highway through there. So it's excellent for, it will definitely withstand, you know, a bike path or something similar like to that, and it could be a beautiful linear park, because it's a pretty wide right of way. So it's long been kind of eyed by the Planning Commission as a corridor for that, as a park slash bike pad corridor, and we do hope that the state will eventually transfer it to the town, subject to the select board's approval. And I'll certainly check with Mr. Corcoran and see if there's any way we could perhaps move that along.
Super. Thank you.
Can I just ask you a question, Dan? Is the entire parcel in Bennington, or does it spill over into Pownell?
It's all Bennington.
It's all Bennington, okay.
All right, keep these ideas coming.
Well, I have a question, since we mentioned that parcel. Could it be used for housing?
I have no idea. I think the first step is to see-
Or is it limited to just road?
Dan, I don't, Dan, do you have any sense of-
It's your idea.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I have zero idea.
So I think it's unlikely, because it was taken for a specific purpose, was a transportation purpose. So I have not looked into the easements that were obtained, et cetera, but, and also, you know, it may be that they're also purchased in fee, so there are no easements, it's just a purchase and fee by the state. So that's, the answer is I don't know for sure, but it's, it is likely that it would be limited to transportation and type of purposes.
Okay. Good question, though. Let's, we'll be interested to find out. Come on.
I'll segue and let somebody else come up with a new idea, but I just wanted to build on Maria's message to encourage folks to vote in the municipal elections that are coming up in March, and also remind people, besides the elections for the select board and whatnot, we'll also be voting on charter changes. Also a reminder that I think a public hearing is going to precede the next select board meeting-
Yes, the charter, yes, at 5:30. Yes, thank you.
So just wanted to share that and remind people, and hope people keep that in mind when elections come up, and if they have thoughts about the amendments, to come and discuss them in public.
And that was Shirley Adams speaking from Bennington.
Sorry. Well, it's good. They're comfortable with quiet. It's good. Gives us time to think. We'll give it five minutes, so put on your thinking caps.
I have a question.
Sure, come on up.
I'm afraid to ask.
Well, think carefully if you're afraid to ask. Please.
And this is for Sarah Kern.
I'm sorry? No, you cannot, no, 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 that is not okay. You cannot do that.
I can either say I cannot answer.
No, no, you missed the very beginning. There are-
So you don't know my question?
No, but what I'm saying, no, no, but what I'm saying-
I'll be here afterwards.
Sarah, so Maria, what I'm saying is that this is a listening session, and one of the rules was that we're here to listen, so it's not to ask any particular one of us to explain anything, or to agree or disagree. So that's a question you can ask privately if you have a question for Sarah, okay? But not a public question.
So when I came here, I asked you, are there any rules that I needed to follow? And you said, as long as I don't reference any names, and no personal tax, anything, which are, there are none. I noticed that she mentioned a name, and then I was like, okay, maybe if we do it in a constructive way, we can ask the question, maybe that's-
Oh, well, Kelly was mentioning that at the last meeting, there was something that happened. But, so if you have something specific to a person, please ask it in private. This is, this is being filmed, and it's for the public. So I know, I don't know what your question is, and it's probably completely fine, and Sarah would probably be completely fine with it, but I'm just going to say, it's really, this is a listening session, so it's really for us to hear from you.
Okay, so I'll make my question generic.
Okay, that works.
Is that good?
Yeah, that works.
So it's my understanding when select board members miss a certain amount of meetings, right? Some rule is broken.
No. No rule is broken.
Consecutively.
No rule is broken.
There's no open meeting law, they can't miss a certain amount.
So I can tell you that in the last, five years ago, when we did the first charter review in, you know, eons, one of the, one of the recommendations that we sent to the legislature was about an individual, was about select board members meeting, missing many, many meetings. And at that time, we had someone who stopped showing up several months before his term was over, and it was pretty upsetting. There was no reason, he just sort of went AWOL. So with that in mind, we asked if we could set some kind of rule, and the legislature came back and said, the voters vote someone in, the voters can vote someone out, it is not up to this public body, or any other public body, to decide who is on, who is on a select board. That is determined by the voters. And so that is, that is the entirety of it, and that is, that is the way it's worked. And, you know, I, you know, I think there's a lot of value in that, so that was, that was actually discussed this time around, and we looked at what didn't fly last time, and we went, and that's where we went.
The only reason I said so, because people know, there's a lot of pride when you have a family member goes to the state, and you know, and people talk, they're like, I'd be there too, you know, as opposed to local. So that's why I wanted to ask the question, that's all.
Okay, all right.
I have a little more information to add. The specific ask, I believe, was when a sitting select board member missed three consecutive regular meetings. That was the specific charter change that was declined on, the legislature took it out. And they also, I remember, they used language that they were concerned that having that in the charter could be used to retaliate. They, I remember that word specifically being used, and they didn't want that amendment to become a weapon to target one person, or, you know, if someone had missed those three meetings.
And I would say that one unique feature of our charter is that we have a recall provision, and that does allow some unbelievable number of signatures on a petition, and remember, it's 70%? 70% of the voters, if they sign a petition, then you can have a special election to decide if you want to remove a select board member. So there's a really high bar, but there is a mechanism for doing that. And it's, you know, it's really to say, you know, look, we're all doing our best, and we care about the town, and unless there is something super egregious that you can get 70% of the voters to sign a petition, you don't want to go there.
I'm not asking you to use it, I just wanted to understand it.
Yeah, okay. Perfect.
And if you would like, we can discuss this afterwards about my absences at the meeting, I'd be happy to let you know.
All right. As I stick a cough drop in my mouth. Next up.
Sarah Beth Ward, Bennington. So just going off what Maria said, just a question. So if someone is on the select board, and then they, for whatever reason, decide they don't want to stay on the select board, how does that seat get filled?
Oh, it's a timing issue. So there are a couple ways. You may, oh, well, actually, maybe this predate you, but we had a select board member who died while in office. We also had a select board member who took a position in another community and needed, and needed to move to that community, so was no longer eligible to be on the select board. In one case, the departure of the individual was right after, right after an election, and so we actually, we actually filled it, because we just had an election, which was very, very close, and, and so it was, it sort of made sense. The other case, we actually only had six members until the next election came up. We could run a special election, and a special election obviously costs money, so you're always trying to figure out, you know, how to do this. It is, it is, I think, helpful to have seven members, rather than be short a member. So, you know, it's always up to this select board, the select board will choose how they want to, how they want to handle that.
The first scenario was an appointment. That's how that person was seated. We didn't have a special election, the select board appointed that person.
Yeah. So there's several, appointment, special election, or just waiting till the regular election. Good questions. Yeah.
So for the most part, historically, it's elective, you choose the chair, historically?
It's the board that makes the decision. We vote on how we want to, what we want to do about the empty seat. Yeah. It's not one person's decision ever. Good questions. Please, please ask.
Good evening. Jackie Matts, Bennington, Vermont. I just wanted to share that last weekend, I had the opportunity to attend a presentation for the Bennington Veteran Incubator Farm. It's a new project that they're trying to get off the ground in this community behind the veterans' home, taking a plot of land and allowing a group of veterans access to that land to farm on it, giving them some economic opportunity, and providing some local food to some local organizations, the hospital, and the college, and some other places. So they're looking to start a board for this, so I thought I wanted to sort of share publicly that there is the opportunity for folks that might be looking for some board experience to help out with what looks like a pretty cool project. Also, a couple of people have mentioned voting this year, and I just want to echo those statements, how important it is for folks to get out and understand what's on the ballot in March, and show up to the polls. So that will be here at the Bennington Firehouse on March 4th, and I just want folks to know that if you're not already registered, you can show up that day and register that day. If you are a formerly incarcerated person, if you have a criminal record, that does not prevent you from voting. If you don't have a home, if you can't put an address down somewhere, that does not prevent you from voting. You're allowed to show up here and vote still on those days, as long as you consider Bennington your primary home. And hopefully next year, when I make this same announcement, I will also be able to share that if you're a recent immigrant, you can show up and vote regardless of your citizenship status. And hopefully, I will also be able to share next year that if you're 16 and 17 years old, you can show up and vote in Bennington if you live here. Those are two initiatives that are on the ballot, which will be discussed next Monday. North Bennington is part of Bennington, so.
Yes, it is. Although they have their own polling place. They have their own polling place, yes. All right. Thank you. Who else? These are all great comments. They're coming slowly, but that's good. You're thinking, and we're learning.
I started a new page, and it's blank right now, so there's room for more. Did I see Kelly just put her hand up in the back? I know, I know. Tried to call her out.
So it is worth reiterating, on Monday's meeting, there'll be a public hearing on the charter review at 5:30, and then it'll be followed by the regular select board meeting. And then on Tuesday, there's a special meeting just for, to discuss Ben High, and that will start at 6:00, and both of those meetings are here.
We'll give it five more minutes.
Sorry, I know people want to go.
Oh, good. No, 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 no.
So Leslie Addison, North Bennington. So one of the recent select board meetings, somebody brought up the notion that for full access, there would be a way for people to call in and pose questions, and there was a remark that maybe we didn't have the technology here. So there's a lot more people who might want to contribute to a public listening hearing who couldn't get out tonight, or who can't get out because of mobility issues or whatever. So technology shouldn't prevent that kind of access, so I would encourage there to be a way for people to have their voice heard a little bit easier.
So we do have an owl, which some of you may be familiar with, and it allows one or two, I mean, it's for a small group of people. We have used it on occasion, and we can, people can request to zoom in. So we have not, we have, I think staff have done some preliminary exploration of the cost of having a full, you know, a full Zoom possibility in this room. It's quite expensive. So we haven't done that yet, but there will be the next select board that will get to choose.
Could there be just like a 1-800 number, and somebody calls, and the phone rings, and here's the time, and call and get through, or something simple?
Yeah, state law allows that now. So you can, we have, we have an owl, so people, I mean, people can do that now.
to call in and post questions. And there was a remark that maybe we didn't have the technology here. So there's a lot more people who might want to contribute to a public listening hearing who couldn't get out tonight, or who can't get out because of mobility issues or whatever. So technology shouldn't prevent that kind of access, so I would encourage there to be a way for people to have their voice heard a little bit easier.
So we do have an owl, which some of you may be familiar with, and it allows one or two, I mean, it's for a small group of people. We have used it on occasion, and we can, people can request to zoom in. So we have not, we have, I think staff have done some preliminary exploration of the cost of having a full, you know, a full Zoom possibility in this room. It's quite expensive. So we haven't done that yet, but there will be the next select board that will get to choose.
Could there be just like a 1-800 number, and somebody calls, and the phone rings, and here's the time, and call and get through or something, something simple?
Yeah, state law allows that now. So you can, we have an owl, so people, I mean, people can do that now. They just have...
Oh, that's what the owl is that you were talking about?
Yeah. The owl is a device that, when someone speaks, it turns towards you.
Yeah, okay. And I was just thinking...
And then you can be seen on the screen.
Like a telephone, you know?
Yeah, telephone works poorly. Just, yeah. The owl is better than telephone, and full Zoom would be better than the owl.
Thank you. Just wanted to make that point.
Yeah. But we, yeah, we do have that capability, and they can do it.
Nancy.
Nancy.
State law went into effect, was it July 1 or January 1 that?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we do it.
We're required to provide that. So if somebody calls a couple of days ahead and talks to Jonah, they can call into a regular meeting, correct?
So you would call to Paul Danzaro, who's the ADA coordinator?
Okay.
Yeah.
But that's open to any citizen who wants to call into a meeting?
Yeah.
And again, the state didn't provide any money. They dumped it on us at the local level, but we have to, we have to provide that now if somebody wants to utilize it.
Yeah. And Stu actually announced that at the last, at the last regular meeting. So, yeah, I mean, we've been, and we put a, the chair and vice chair do a what's coming up at the select board meeting release before each meeting, and part of that is giving Paul Danzaro's information, if you would like accommodations, to be able to attend a meeting. And one of those accommodations would be to come by Zoom. Yeah, Jean?
I don't disagree with you at all. And I just want the community to be aware, there's also, on the website, you can make a comment, and we all get it. So there's that option also. It's not coming to a meeting, but if anyone has anything they'd like the select board to hear, there's that mechanism as well. You have to have access to a computer to be able to do that, which I think the vast majority of people do.
Good point.
Yeah. So it's, yeah, it's a work in progress. It's clunky right now. Oh, Clark, yes.
You mentioned work in progress, which got me thinking, in light of our frigid conditions of late. Any update on issues of our heating or cooling facilities? Where are we standing? Or isn't that been a problem in the last few days here in town?
Yeah. So there is, as part of the protocol, so that we have something called the Local Emergency Management Plan. Each town has to adopt one, so Bennington has one. And our central command is out of the police department, and our police chief is the point, the head point person for this. We have been working, a small group of people have been working on two appendices that are called annexes, for some reason. And one is for extreme cold weather, and the other is for extreme hot weather. And we began the hot weather one back when there was hot weather, and we are still working on that one. It's getting close. There is a meeting to sort of look at, the bones are there, and we're having a meeting to talk with some of the key players in the next couple of weeks, which would be the rescue squad, organizations like Turning Point, G-Bix, which is the food distribution and medical, free medical clinic, to see how all those, how the needs of people during an extreme heat event could be assisted by those organizations. The cold weather will be similar. You may have noticed that there's a notice up on the town website. So when a cold or heat event notice comes to the police chief, it then goes to the communication coordinator, who posts a ready-made, you know, information up that talks about resources that people can access, what to do if they need a place to stay, if they need, you know, to get hot or cold, and where they can access food and medical. So it is remarkably, it's remarkably complicated, and none of us really expected that, but it is working.
Let me just follow up to that and say that I know it's working. I had a situation with an individual that I came into contact yesterday who needed assistance because of the cold. And we followed the instructions for that person and got them connected to resources, and they were off the street last night. So I was glad to see that the instructions that are on the town website have the follow-up that is necessary. But I also want to tell you that what Jeanne just said about complication is just scratching the surface. There are so many organizations and individuals and groups of people that want to address this issue, this select board, to its, you know, to its ability, and so many people from the public. But the things that crop up, you can't, you can't offer a service to folks to get them out of the cold unless you have some sort of insurance. You can't get insurance unless you're trained. You can't be trained unless you fall under the umbrella of a professional organization. And I could go on and on and on about how complicated that is. There are solutions being worked on, but when I first started paying attention to this situation, I was really surprised and taken aback by how complicated it really is.
You're saying that, I'm trying to understand this, for organizations to assist, they have to have all these insurances and all these things? But for the average resident in Bennington, if I open my doors to the homeless, I'm in trouble?
No, 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 no. That would be completely on your own, Maria, and all the things that come with it, at your own risk, et cetera. For the organizations that have looked for ways to support the effort, sort of overall, in groups, I mean, and there's more resource in groups, right? We come together, and we ought to be able to accomplish more. We're talking about, one of the examples for a cooling shelter, it just happens to be on my mind, was our high school did not have the right air conditioning configuration last summer when it was hot. It was in the works, so this summer, that part of it ought to be resolved. And, but the organization that is responsible for the sheltering of those people in the high school needs to be trained, insured, et cetera.
Okay. The only reason I'm asking again is because I present, I have asked this question to Mary Garish, I like her a lot. I was always fearful when I opened my doors to people, I have many, many bedrooms, big house, and I was always fearful that I could, I would get in trouble, albeit I didn't charge them a dime, not for the food, housing, or anything. So, I hear, you better be careful. You have to have insurance, you have to have this. And so I was wondering if what you said applies.
That is not what I was speaking to.
I understand that.
Yeah, I do not have experience in that individual. I would say that, I would say that you're at your own risk and completely on your own when you do something like that.
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that okay, Madam Chair?
Yeah, yeah, it's like, yeah.
Well, it's five of seven, so we'll give it another five. Deb!
That five more has saved us a few times.
Debbie Matt, I was wondering if there was another phase to the echo part of this, you know, are there going to be new things on the wall, or is just what got put in the ceiling, is that it?
I think we're done. Dan, do you have any information about that? I think this was the...
There's no plan.
Okay, all right. So this, the ceiling tiles are, I mean, I think they have helped, but not enough, is that what I'm hearing from you?
And these have worked, and again, they weren't before, but they are...
Okay, but you're using the earphones, which I guess is useful for people to know that there are headphones that you can, you can use to help...
Because it was working, then it wouldn't work.
Clarify. It is working, yeah. Okay. So, yeah, I mean, the echo is a lot less, and we can't hear the back of the room speaking quite as much as we could before, which was strange.
When you sit in the audience and you hear us say that, I know you don't believe us. We can hear up until, and it's, we can still hear more in the back room than we can hear right in the front of the room. It's not as drastic as it was. The acoustics in this room are terrible. I'm still turning on and off hearing aids, one ear or the other, volume up, volume down. It's terrible, so I'm with you.
The microphones pick up. At home, you can hear everything. If you're sitting in the back or even at the table. When we built the firehouse, one of the things cut from the budget was the sound system, and that's why the sound has been so awful for 30-plus years. So the panels did help a little bit, but that's why it's critical when you talk in the microphone, you have to be able to hear yourself for everybody in the room or anybody hearing impaired, otherwise you're, we're out of luck.
Last thoughts, guys?
That sounds so poetic.
Oh, maybe, yeah, okay. Next last thoughts, yeah. We've covered a lot of topics tonight, that's really nice. Appreciate it. Any last, any last thoughts before I ask for a motion to close the meeting? Deb, you are really responsive to that.
Don't look that into me tonight.
Debbie Matt, Bennington, I'd like to put in a plug for Meals on Wheels tomorrow. They're having their meal of the month, and it's ham dinner.
It's what? Ham dinner, okay.
For a $5 donation, you can't beat it.
Super. Thank you for saying that. That's a happy note to end on. Yes, Clark?
I just wanted to, if we could reiterate to folks out there at home watching, the mechanism where if they do elect to call in, as we're aware, you know, weather, family, whatever, a lot of things are, may keep people away. So if we can make sure we reiterate to the public how...
Oh, okay.
...be able to call in and become involved with this.
Yeah. You just, you want to connect with Paul Danzaro, or you can just, I mean, so you're going to call the town office, and you say, I'm interested in making arrangements to participate remotely, and they will connect you with Paul. But Paul Danzaro is the ADA coordinator for the town, as well as several other hats, but that's the one relevant. Thank you.
And Paul's contact info is obviously on the website. It's also, as Jeanne said, in the release that's in the banner, the Thursday, Friday, before our regular Monday meetings. It's part of the agenda that we release.
All right. I'll ask for a motion to close the hearing, the meeting?
So moved, if the public is sure. I just moved to adjourn.
Okay. Do we have a second? Thank you, Clark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.